And we can probably, if that's what Sherma says, or the end of the one that is. You know, I've been converting from P Y to.
So we're supposed to get an out school company and.
How's that?
I think the water.
Can everyone hear me?
All over Florida.
Yes, I can hear you.
So they're coming tomorrow.
George, where are you?
Doing good. Well, I came down with a flu about a week and a half ago and over it now, but still have a pretty bad cough. So I didn't. I don't think anybody wanted me there tonight coughing.
That's why I zoomed last one of that cough.
I know the doctor said it could last about four weeks.
You should find a better doctor.
I should. But I feel fine except for the cough.
Three weeks.
Hey Chief, how you doing?
Somebody else.
Yeah, even though I stayed at a holiday in select one.
Well, there you go.
Yes, I actually had to go back out to where I live as well. So I did help and check the plans, but they sure did look like they were right on the play. I can imagine that.
Hey Stefan, have you been out biking lately?
Yes, I have.
How about tomorrow?
I did thirty miles this morning. I'll do thirty tomorrow.
Thursday and Friday, I'll be impressed.
If we see you there on Thursday. I've been out for two weeks now. In two weeks. You, you been out?
No, no, not in this weather. I just had carpal tunnel done. I just got the stitches out today, so I don't need anything happening on a bike.
The same doctor told you four weeks, stitches out?
I heard the people at the coffee shop saw you there about a week or two ago, surprised.
Uh, I stopped in last Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah. Had a couple larynx over that way. Were in one of those Santa ones.
Okay.
I think we get to do some coloring during the meeting.
I'll tell you the, the Tony, Tony, the flu gave me the time to read that whole packet the last week.
That, that packet was the largest packet that I've ever had to put together with three and a half years I've worked here.
I'll tell you what.
Brought down the internet for half of them.
Up there today and was talking to Eugene. I was pretty impressed with that contract. A lot of work went into that, I saw. So kudos to the three guys that did it.
Oh, you're talking about the wastewater agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that's gonna be tabled?
The one that's gonna be tabled.
More on that to come, George, yes. We've got seven thirty. We got one, two, three, four, and George is five. We've got a forum, we've got a meeting, a call order. Here. Mister thatly.
Here.
Mister Hearn.
Here.
Mister Thor.
Here.
Mister Hoffman.
Here.
Mister Nibb. Okay, we have got uh four present and fifth one attending by Zoom. Uh, governor has extended the gubernatorial proclamation until January some Pacific. So we can continue to have our remote attendance. However, with remote attendance goes the uh voting rules that all votes will be by roll call. Sorry, Mr. Knowles. It's alright.
It's fine.
So with that being said, we will continue with meeting. Minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
So move the athlete.
Second, Thor.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by Thorn, or any additions or corrections to the minutes this evening? Not roll call please. Mister Prano.
I'm staying since I wasn't at the meeting.
Mister Hoffman.
Hi.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Mister Dattley.
Hi.
Mister Hardy.
Hi.
Four affirmative votes and one extension on motion so passes and minutes are approved. Thank you, one and all. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the president's report. I've already gone through the gubernatorial proclamation, just hope to say that phrase. Uh, second item in my, the report is the village hall hours. Uh, calendar math is not one of my four takes.
Well.
We did the uh village hall hours last meeting on the fifth. And then we corrected the date that we had missed on the meeting dates. Well, we missed a holiday. New Year's Eve or Christmas Eve is an official booked holiday in the personnel meeting. So that falls on Saturday and we need to recognize it on Friday, the twenty-fourth. We did not include Friday, the twenty-third in our hall closure minutes, the last meeting. We need to revise those hours to include Friday, the twenty-third. Saturday is the. It was Christmas Eve that we, it was in the main. If I could have a motion to revise the holiday hall hours to include Friday, December twenty-third.
I'll go ahead and approve the motion to have Christmas Eve holiday fall on December twenty-third, Friday.
Second, moved by Hoffman, seconded by Hardy to add the Friday, December twenty-third to the village hall holiday hours for of office closure. Any further comments, questions or discussion? If not, roll call vote please. Mister Prano.
Hi.
Mister Dattley.
Hi.
Mister Hardy.
Hi.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Mister Hoffman.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes, negative votes, and motion so passes. Thank you all. Okay, next one, resolution five fifty. Agreement, an intergovernmental agreement with the village of West Dundee for wastewater services. We have a motion to so approve resolution five fifty.
I move we approve resolution five fifty.
I'll second it.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by Hoffman to approve resolution five fifty, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the village of West Dundee for wastewater services. Okay, folks, in your packet, you will see wastewater agreement that we have struck with West Dundee. This is a two and a half year process. Uh, the investigator started in May of twenty twenty. We remember May of twenty twenty. Uh, but that's when this all, this whole thing started. Uh, this is the uh billing from West Dundee for the sewage that would go through their system to forward. We have finally got all the numbers and all the accounts noted. We've identified all of our residents that utilize the service. West Dundee sent two people over to verify our account. Their account matches our account. Uh, we've identified a hundred and fifty-seven customers that currently have water service as well as sewer service. We have seventeen customers that have just strictly sewers. The agreement with West Dundee is now based upon the water that we use. And not the flumes that were monitored in uh Pittsburgh. So going forward, every month, we will take the water billing read. We will share that with West Dundee and that's what we will be building. Water that we use. The water meter reads through, so those hundred and fifty-seven people that are on the sewer system will get their water bill to West Dundee. And that's what we'll pay sewage. See, Don's in the audience and he's got it. What about the seventeen people that don't have? Seventeen people that don't have it, I was getting there. They are on a fixed rate of service bill with an agreement with Dundee in this resolution five fifty. That all seventeen of them will be a metered residence for their water by five years from now. So by twenty twenty-seven, those seventeen will have to be on a metered system. Uh, part of this agreement, it include, it now brings the village apartments into our billing system. In the past, those bills were set to the apartments by West Dundee. So part of this agreement, since they are our customer, our residents in our service, we will bill them and we will receive those fees. Uh, part of this agreement, you will notice, is that we need to settle with West Dundee on the forward on fees. Forward is the foxer, the water reclamation district. They are the ones that process the sewage, the goods to them. We simply use a bike through West Dundee and some of West Dundee's capacity. But now those apartments are ours. And so all the depreciation and credits for the service to those lines will come to us instead of West Dundee. Okay, so that will become part of our agreement. Kinder care is the exception now. Kinder care has water supply by West Dundee. But the sewage comes through our facilities. So West Dundee is going to continue to count them against our capacity, but we will now bill Kinder care. So it's going to be a two-way street. One hand, we're going to be giving West Dundee our water bills for our hundred and fifty-seven residents, plus the apartments. And they will be giving us the water bill for Kinder care. Instead of the four flumes going around and around anymore, once this agreement is signed and completed, those flumes will be removed. And we will no longer need to deal with them. So it took all about two years and seven months to get. It is here. We've got the motion, we've got the uh second. We have a conversation, discussion on this? Questions on it? Okay, the next thing I'm going to do is ask that we table this until January third. Everybody's looking. West Dundee does not have this on their agenda this year. So I see no sense in us moving forward if them's still, you know, you know, rear is so excited. So for that reason, while we have discussed it, it is all prepared. I just assumed table the vote on this until West Dundee does have it in their agenda. Now the motion is table till January third?
So move the athlete.
Second, Thor.
Move by the athlete, seconded by Thorn to table, yeah, table, I was calling it, until January third, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, any comments, questions, or discussion? The none, roll call please. Mister Hoffman.
Hi.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Mister Hardy.
Hi.
Mister Dattley.
Hi.
Mister Prano.
Hi.
Lot of affirmative votes, no negative votes. We are tabled until January third. Okay, I believe that is it for my report this evening. But your part, I have no reports tonight. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, planning zoning permission. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Uh, Charlie's report. Anything from the attorney this evening? Engineer report. Mister Steele is not with us. It's the second meeting of the month, so we'll have to take a look at his note on the project update. Which he tells us that we're going to see a three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar bill bestie for the road program in our warrants. And he so approves the uh request from Getsky. Anybody have a question for the engineer? Not, we'll move to director of financial report.
Request a motion for the approval of the warrants in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I'll approve.
Second.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Thorn to approve the warrants of January or December nineteen, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of forty-one four hundred and twelve. Four hundred. Okay, four hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. I couldn't get down. Okay, any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call please. Mister Prano.
Hi.
Mister Dattley.
Hi.
Mister Hardy.
Hi.
Mister Thor.
Hi.
Mister Hoffman.
Hi.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes, a motion so passes. You all? Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, uh. Okay, comments. Mister English.
Evening everyone. Uh, I again am speaking on behalf of the Service Club. Uh, there is another event that I'd like to extend an invitation to everybody in this room too. And that's the club's appreciation dinner on January fourteenth at six thirty at Blue Root. If this is different, obviously, from the thirty-fifth or sixty-fifth, fiftieth dinner. But uh, details on menu and price, we're still working on that. But I just want you to keep that date open. And we hope that everybody will be able to attend. If you have any questions, John or I could always answer those. But that was all I have.
The fourteenth, uh.
Blue Root.
Blue Root?
Yep.
Time and whatnot to be announced.
Six thirty.
Okay.
Be much like the previous years.
Get information to us and get it up on our website too.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Rich. Uh, Mister Z M.
Oh yes, Mister President, uh, I understand that the finance trustee is resigned and will be leaving?
Shortly.
Hey George, I just want to say, since I was in that position for twenty years up until the last election, if you need someone to help out until the next election, I'm willing to throw my hat. Now, I'll do whatever it takes. If I have to send you a resume or something, I'd be willing to do that if.
You might want to stop by village hall and have a coffee with Eugene somewhere.
Okay. Oh, so I'll talk to a guy that knows something about finance in this village. All right. One, on M E, two, T W O. You guys made us some laughs in these meetings for last year. Alright.
Thank you for your offer, Don, appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is uh trustee reports, roads and parks.
Uh, nothing new to report, except um, Calum Dillon Public Works wanted me to tell everybody that they're anxiously awaiting for the blizzard on Thursday. The trucks are ready to go. They will be by then.
Did we have any results moving lately?
It was due today. This morning it was due soon.
You saw it, right?
I, well, they, they were banking on it. I think they were going to try and come down that little service road. So get it back all the way up down the street.
Okay, I was just gonna say, the last time I looked at the barn, it's getting a little.
They got it.
What is it be the second year I've been in Palm Springs, and Chicago's been on the news this season? You really want that?
Yeah.
If you want that in a minute. Thank you. Uh, finance, Mister Hoffman.
Uh, just a couple of things, not, not a lot. Uh, I think I said before, and I'll make it official, I went through that contract with West Dundee from start to finish. I actually went through it a couple of times and found it uh well-written, very well-laid out. Uh, I guess the only surprise was the uh Fox Valley waste where we're going to take a percentage of that through West Dundee. But in talking to Eugene, uh, our percent will be on usage, correct? So uh.
Sure, right.
Yeah, because I looked at what West Dundee has paid to date and, you know, they've got some significant funds, but ours should only be a like a miniscule portion of that. And if I'm correct, looking at it going forward, I think it's going to be about nine thousand dollars a year or less. Am I correct?
Uh, I think it's nine thousand for right now, uh, because we've, we've gotten some past credits, but then it's going to, I think it's like twenty-three thousand.
I was gonna say, it's more closer to twenty-three total, George.
A year?
Yeah, yeah, we have, I think, two payments a year.
This was part of uh, West Dundee was collecting fees from the apartments. Okay, so we wanted credit for that.
Okay.
So, you know, we've done some uh dealing with them on that. But overall, we had nine thousand this year and then twenty-two, twenty-three thousand going forward.
And our percentage is going to be point zero zero seven five, correct? That will pay per gallon or discharge.
Point zero seven five.
Yeah, that's what I mean, zero seven five, okay. All right, now, other than that, uh, like I said, well-written and well-done. So kudos to the three of you.
Thank you.
Uh, question on, I think the chief.
Problem.
What's that?
I said time was not a problem.
Oh, yeah. Two, two and a half years, right?
Yep.
How many times did I ask you about that?
Kept asking them about it.
Yeah, I know. And after asking you, when I, when I looked at the contract over the last week, wow, I figured, yeah, I can see why. Uh, okay, another question. Uh, this is for the chief. What is Ultra Strobe?
Our squad car outfitter.
The what?
They're the ones who outfit our squad cars.
Oh, okay. I kind of figured it was something like that. It was, we had a forty-seven hundred dollar charge there. That's why I was curious.
Yeah, we had ordered the equipment for the new squad whenever Ford decides to build it. Um, and they've been sitting on the equipment, but obviously they want to close their, their account out before the end of the year for them. So they have to bill as long as they can, but, so, yeah, we had to pay it.
Okay, and we still haven't heard anything from Ford?
Uh, I talked to them today. Uh, they told me that there's no new information. They still haven't told them how much of the discount. So I have a, I have an invoice for the squad car. There's always government holdback monies. They still haven't told, Ford still hasn't told Ford how much that government holdback's going to be. But they did tell us that our order was the only order that actually got in through the portal.
Think we'll get it by the end of next year?
Right now it's a twenty-three. I'm hoping it doesn't become a twenty-four. We originally ordered a twenty-two.
Okay. Eugene. Eugene, I saw we had uh two charges on there for Heinz this month. I think there was one, I wasn't sure, it was like thirteen or fourteen, and another charge. Uh, were they both the same?
So what it is, is that he bills us and then the bill is broken down to a different category. So it's one bill broken down the, you know, like between sewer and, and water and roads and, and all that stuff.
Okay.
So it's just, just a, you know, a more specific breakdown of, of their billing.
And the last question I have is uh, is I was reading through, I saw we wound up with some additional charges. Uh, I guess about a hundred and fifty dollars or so or more uh from Lindeman with that swimming pool. Were we ever going to go back and bill him for the ancillary expense that we incurred uh for legal fees and all that to fight that when he put that swimming pool up without a permit?
That's not my decision.
I thought we had decided we were going to try to bill.
I don't remember the consensus of the board on that. I, we had conversations, but I don't think we ever came to a decision.
Do we need to take a vote on that or anything? Or, because I, look at that, I know that for the liquor and for the banquet hall, I know we've got escrow put aside for them, right?
Right.
And that's, that's something totally different. But when we have these permit, I think I said before, when there's permitting issues, where the resident just went out and did it on their own and they were flagged by barber or the officer or whatever, and then we have to incur all these legal fees. I mean, I think right now, legal fees for Lindeman was probably close to eight hundred dollars, maybe more. And the village incurred all those. We did give them the approval, but I think for that approval, he should at least belly up and, and pay, you know, for the legal fees that we had incurred. Does anybody else agree with that or what?
No, you're, you're spot on. Uh, let me talk with Eugene on this in the next couple of days and we'll go from there.
Okay, other than that, that's it.
Okay, though, uh, got it. I'm going to take a couple of your minutes, George, and make a couple of comments on the uh revenue and expense report that came out last week. Uh, real quick, just a couple of points I want to bring up. The uh revenues. Our sales tax. We are now at a hundred and ten and a hundred and seven percent of our sales tax revenues for the year twenty twenty-three. And we're only seven months into the year. So the share that we're now getting from the state for the internet sales is definitely helping. We had forecasted for this year, just in sales tax, sixty thousand dollars. As of the end of November, we had sixty-four thousand plus. So we're a hundred and seven percent.
President Pickett, just uh to coincide with that, did we ever or was there a way that we could resolve or was that resolved for when you order off of the internet? I think you remember, I found a couple of instances where I ordered and West Dundee was getting the tax, not Sleepy Hollow, because the way the zip code was. where I ordered and West Dundee was getting the tax, not Sleepy Hollow, because the way the zip code was.
Yeah, uh, it is a zip plus four. Verify that your billers are using zip, and the people you're ordering for, from, are using zip plus four.
But how do we do that with companies?
You just, whenever they ask, when you send, uh, an order in online, it asks for your address. Go to your zip code and put those last four in there.
Okay.
If you take a look at a bill, almost every mass mailer today has gone to you. And you're, you're four, it's zip plus four. Uh, mine is eighteen thirty-nine. So it's six zero one one eight dash one eight three nine. And then the shipping and billing should register for Sleepy Hollow, Illinois, not West.
Sometimes that doesn't come up, but, uh, majority of times it does now, and we put the number in. But I wonder how many others in the village don't do that, and it defaults to West Dundee, so I'm sure we've lost some revenue there.
There might have been a bucka here or there, but I, most people, if you see it, if, if anything comes to me, says Dundee, Illinois, I immediately change that to Sleepy Hollow, and it's easy with that zip plus four.
Yeah.
That, that'll tell them right away, hey, that's not West Dundee. Okay, onward, uh, speaking of sales tax. Uh, the other one that's really jumped out at me is the, uh, replacement tax. That's up almost sixty percent. We forecasted thirteen thousand for that, and we're at twenty-one thousand. Uh, so, you know, overall, we have got the majority of our money from, uh, property tax, and that's not gonna go anywhere. The rest of it's gonna be uh, coming in through its time, but even with those big items from the replacement tax and the sales tax, our income to date is running about eighty-seven percent of the budget. So, you know, here we are, if you do the math, what are we, fifty-eight percent through the year, you know, November? And at the end of November, we had eighty-seven percent of our revenues.
And only forty-nine percent of expenses.
And only forty-nine percent of. So that means the cash balance is a rolling mark.
Yep.
Yep, so, yeah, that's all, the, the next item, uh. And revenues, okay, oh, yeah, the expenses. Uh, the general administrative expenses, and I mean, this is all of them, salaries and benefits. Uh, for general administration, we are at fifty-three percent of budget, so. That's a good one there. Uh, the next one, the police, uh, is at fifty-five percent of fifty-eight. And the next one is Parks and Recreation, forty-nine percent of expenses. Uh, Village Property, this one, it gets the A, sixty-eight percent of expenses. Fifty-eight's the number, you're ten percent over.
I'm sorry, what else?
You're ten percent over your budget right now in, uh, Village Property.
I'd like to blame Tony for that.
Okay, of course you would.
Yeah.
Uh, streets where it's fifty-two percent. So, you say, um, I think we're in a pretty good position moving through six, seven months into the year. So, Mr. Z, I've noted from, uh, the audience, uh, cash flow is doing pretty nice. I just thought, yeah, I bring those little items up, uh, I want you guys to know. Uh, oh, can't leave this out, there's others here. Uh, there's two other departments that we have to cover. Water. Water's doing pretty good. Uh, Joe's got about a hundred and fourteen percent of his revenue and for the year. So he's got that pretty well nailed. Uh, the one that we have a problem with is sewage. That one, uh, we're down. Total revenues for sewage is, uh, about seventeen, eighteen percent below. But a lot of that has to do with this agreement with West Dundee. We're not billing the apartments yet. We don't start billing them until we get the, uh, agreement signed. So that would bring that back around.
When we did the budget, it was based on us having the apartments.
That was beautiful.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to bring that up, George, and let everybody know where we stood on that, so. It looked darn good in my mind.
Well, I've said that all along, from fiscal responsibility, since I've come into it, I think I've said it many, many times. Uh, this village probably does as good of a job, if not better, than any village, you know, in Kane County. And I think that's a, that's a testament to the, to the team, and like I said, Eugene brought a lot to the table. So, uh, I told him today when I was there for a while, that he, uh, he educated me a lot on municipal financial components, which I didn't have a lot of background in, you know, being, you know, knowing P and Ls from a business, but not from municipal, but, uh, he's brought a lot to the table and has done a great job, so I think, uh, he definitely should get some kudos there.
Okay. Wow, okay, thank you, George. Uh, water and sewer, Mr. Nemec is not with us this evening. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Um, several things, um, trying to move through them quickly. Um, I hope you all have a chance to read the chief's report. There's a lot of great information in there. Uh, what's going on, um, you know, the yearly shop with the cop. Um, a very good program, not only for the department and the community, and the people we help with that, so. Uh, very good information there. Um, that's a shout out to Officer Jerry Norton. Um, December sixteenth, he will have completed twenty years of service to the people and the village of Sleepy Hollow. So I think that is, uh, you know, very noteworthy, and I appreciate his work. Uh, what he's done, because, uh, this day and age, you won't see the longevity of that very often anymore. Uh, so greatly appreciated, uh, there. Um, I think you all heard the chief's update on the, uh, squad car. Um, someday, maybe we'll see what happens. Um, the other item I have is the, uh, employee assistance program. Uh, this was presented in September, um, for information purposes, and we have not really done anything with it, and we need to move forward with it at this time. Um, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the employee assistance program in, with the cost, total cost for the village, with the fifteen employees in the police department, two in public works, and four village employees for the amount of five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Sorry.
Steve, is that a month, or is that the yearly cost?
No, that's the yearly cost, and out of that, we do have, the chief has a grant for two thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars of that. Um, so the actual cost to the village, in a sense, is only two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, this is, this is a statute that is out there, uh, that we do have to comply with. It is a mental health, uh, statute um, that has to be provided to our employees and our officers, uh, to take care of them in that situation. Um, chief, you could probably speak for this a little more, you've got a little more study on it than I have.
I think the sign-up, the other benefit to the program is the mental health part is obviously that statutory, we have to comply, but it also gives access for our employees and their families, by the way, it covers family members as well, full and part-time. Uh, but it gives access to other programs, whether it's financial advisors, whether it's, um, people that are dealing with emotional issues, things like that. Uh, and the nice thing is the way the program is set up. Uh, you'll see in the packet, it covers three, it talks about three counseling sessions per event. That's not three per year. So if, if one of our employees has an event that's financially related this week, and that has a psychologically-related event next week, those are two separate events, and each one gives three, like, three counseling sessions. Um, so, and I do know a couple of other chiefs that have dealt with this company. They're an excellent company. The other thing they will do is they'll provide my mental health check, not, not for me personally. My, my department's mental health check-in is that we're statutory required to do as well, and they only charge us ninety dollars an officer to do those, which is substantially cheaper if I was, if I was blow out and get a mallet card, so. Yeah, excellent program.
Chief, I, uh, stopped in today. I was there for a while today, and I talked to, uh, Eugene about it. I had some questions. But I will say, after speaking with him and going over it, he went over it in depth with me. And I'd recommend any of the other trustees, if you have any questions regarding it, e- even after reading through it, which I did. Talked to Eugene about it, and, uh, uh, based on what I came away with, there are definitely benefits to it. Uh, especially being in the, in the jobs that they're in, being part of the first responders, officers and all that. There's a lot of components we wouldn't think of that he brought up that would be covered with that, and you're going to experts that are possibly former officers or have gotten advanced degrees, and know exactly what the officers are going through. Uh, so they're talking to someone with experience, with some compassion and all that, versus going outside and seeing a psychologist or whatever, so, uh, after reading through and getting my questions answered, I thought it was well worth it.
Thank you. I agree with George. I just happened to read just one item here on the seminars they've got. Happiness, unlock the formula for, for happiness and find sustained joy. I'm signing up for that one.
And the only additional cost that would be on top of, uh, what Trustee Deatley cited is each, each supervisor should go, or department head should go through the supervisory training, it's a webinar type thing. Then those will go anywhere from two to five hundred dollars total, uh, for all of us to go. Now, basically, that's about the only additional costs, and anything else, we would choose what we want, you know, if we wanted to add anything.
And it's another component the village can offer when you're looking at new hires.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, in further comments, questions, or discussion? You did have a motion, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Now, we've got it moved and seconded, I just couldn't remember if it was on the floor yet. So we don't have any further comments or questions or discussion, vocal? Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thornt. Aye. Mr. Prado. Aye. Mr. Deatley. Aye. Mr. Harden. Aye. Line of forming votes and no negative votes, the motion so carries. Thank you, one and all.
That's all I have, President Pickett.
All right, thank you, Steve. Uh, building environment, Mr. Thornt.
Yeah, one thing, um, uh, the president forwarded me a, uh, an email about a program called the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Greenest Region Compact. Now, this, this sort of has, it's sort of similar to something that I brought before the board before. Um, in terms of, uh, uh, not costing anything, there not being any, uh, 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 requirements that we do anything with this, uh, for the most part, but we will get all sorts of counseling, we asked for it, how to do some of these things to make, uh, better environmental sense. So that part's actually, uh, seemed pretty cool to me. So I don't have anything for the board tonight, I just wanted to let you know about it, and, uh, uh, maybe the next meeting, I'll, I'll get it together enough to get this out to you. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mark. Uh, building and zoning. Mr. Prado, you have the Cliff Notes.
I'm deferring my comments to Mr. Denver. I couldn't open the talk.
Um, I have to add.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Were you able to send the revision with the, uh, R- uh, Rottland Dundee fire protection district that I sent to you late this afternoon?
No, because I didn't receive it before I left the village.
There are basically two changes to what you have in your package. Um, I, they did reach out to me with additional comments on late this afternoon, and they can't have a five-inch stores, they have to have a four-inch unit six stores. And so that had to get changed in it, and they want two and a half inch connection. And they want a blue light for a flow alarm, and they want a red flashing light for the, when a fire alarm goes off. So each building will need to have, if it's a single building, for instance, like if home life were to be built new, they'd have to have flashing red if it was an alarm at the front of the building, and flashing blue light above the fire department connection. So that when the fire department first pulls up, they know if they're dealing with water flow, or if they're dealing with simply a alarm. And so that was a five of five change this afternoon. So when we get to adopting the ordinance, I would really ask that you make the motion with the Rottland Dundee township, Rottland Dundee Fire Protection District Amendment. Which is in the old CAS, but I'm sorry, it didn't get actually posted. Um, as you can see, and that calls about five hundred and fifty, and
By age?
Yeah, yeah, that page by age either. The majority of the amendments, the relations that you're actually seeing in national building code and international fire code is to take all commercial and that type of project to zero, so everything will be sprinkled going forward in terms of reconstruction. Um, fire department is very pleased with that, and they're pleased with the other amendments that have been made to assist them um, in making sure for the safety of the first responders, specifically fire department. Not that we're leaving you out, Chief, but.
It's a big cause, blue canaries. He's at their first and.
Oh, if you were full, yeah.
So, anyway, uh, they're pretty much everything, um, in, in trying to get this going forward. I'm trying to have it available so when the new projects are coming into the village, that we have an updated code. Give me updated codes to do that. Um, also, the fire training radius and that type of thing, it's in the fire and building code. The fire department is very pleased with that, so, um, we'll try to take them into account, um. A lot of expertise that I've been able to garner over the years of writing codes with fire departments, um, to achieve a, a good goal that, um, will protect the buildings and things like that. The fire sprinklers for single family, attached single family, um, that will impact, of course, the, the will of development, but just think of it this way, back in the fifteen and sixteen, when houses were built of non-composite materials, when furniture was made of natural products, it was sometimes fifty to sixty minutes before there was flashover. Now it's two minutes. And that flashover, most people don't even realize they even have a fire, or when your smoke detector goes off, they're maybe just reaching for the phone, the phone, or the button. So, in the single-family home to family, anything like that, multiple family, it's life-saving that we're trying to do. When you're dealing with a commercial building, it's product safety, and trying to save the building at stock. Because there's so many, because there's really no re- when the patient be able to get out with all of the pistons, boots for hallway widths and tile widths, et cetera. So that's the, the big difference. Um, oh, one other big thing, uh, chapter four will no longer be in existence in title seven, um, because in here's the little one down check. New swim but this is the new small fitness, and, sorry, I don't, I don't know where I'll, I'll get on picture. There you go, George. Um, this is the new swimming pool code, so it deals with, um, the fences and things like that, and just as an FYI, the product previously requirement for forty-eight inches clear height above ground, as we maintain, I would just repeat from pool. So if they have a pool here, and they've got a, a rising hill, it's gotta be three feet or forty-eight inches all the way out. Just just going immediate past history, okay? So that's the reason the title are. So that's the reason the title or chapter seven is being deleted, that would be placed on that code. Um, and that talks about all the different kinds of pools that there are, spas and things like that. Only talked enough. Do you have questions for me?
I just sent that, by the way, to everyone. So the rating, that's why you're not getting any response.
Yeah.
So you want a motion for twenty-two dash fifteen?
Well, I think it's under reasonable business for the actual ordinance. It's up to, however, I would, I would deeply appreciate it.
You've got building code revision update, then you've got building code, and there's nothing in between. It's all business. So if someone would like to make a motion concerning ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, mending title seven.
With Rutland Dundee partnership amendments.
I moved that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen with Rutland Dundee Fire District, the Denver uh, impacting building regulations, the chapter one and four.
Second.
Moved by Prano, seconded by Thornd to approve ordinance twenty-two dash fifteen, mending title seven of the building regulations. Any further comments, questions or discussion?
I just want to make a comment as building the zoning trustee. I knew Miss Depple was working on this because it's the very first time I've ever seen anything in it. So I'm at a disadvantage on not knowing what the hell's falling on anyway. So uh, I make the motion because I know she's done good work, but I have no background or expertise or anything that's mattered. That's all I have.
Just claiming any responsibility. Okay. Any other comments, questions or discussion? Let's have a roll call, please. Mr. Thornd. Aye. Mr. Hearn. Aye. Mr. Gatlin. Aye. Mr. Hoffman. Aye. Mr. Prano. Aye. Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so carries. One and all. Anything else, Anthony?
That's it, sir.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. Uh, all business, any old business come before the board? All business come before the board. Uh, next we've got, uh, twenty-two dash fifteen, which we just carried through. Building zone fees.
What you have, it's not a view. I'm sorry, the, just writing the ordinance was about twenty-two hours, which by the way, is going to be the way I did, like, so you'll be receiving a bill for that, but it'll have a zero balance to do with what you requested. Um, so, but with the building permit fee, we're currently operating on the original piece, basically that we came in to the village in two thousand and nine. And as I'm sure there, you're well aware, there are many, many additional expenses to trying to operate, uh, after gasoline insurance, et cetera. And so, um, we're looking at increasing unfortunately, the fees, um, trying to keep the lower end permits relatively, um, similar. But one thing changing, if you, and this is not completely, I, I have to admit, I was going to try and caution a little more when I got the fire department in place of the cabinet, which made me scramble. Um, but this would take effect basically on January one, um, because the ordinance being such that we can post them, that's why I'm not going to theoretically take, uh, an official vote to post these. Um, I am taking them because I've been doing all the zoning for these basically free, and so I'm going to start targeting for those maybe a minimal amount, uh, decree new construction that can, can take a lot longer and a lot of, um, sometimes challenge of getting people into zoning compliance. Um, the big, big one that you're going to see here is roofs. In the past two years, I only have three roofs out of all the roof permits that we issued that have been ready when they have asked for the roof. The worst case was one for all this night. Um, and I was out there a couple of times, but, um, I've literally had somewhere, um, I had one that's just left, where they requested it for eleven o'clock. Make the issue back to twelve thirty. I kept there at twelve thirty and it wasn't even ready. And when I'm sitting, and yes, I'm trying to do this from here, but I have other commitments as well that, and other inspections that I may need to do out and running back and forth and back and forth. So yes, my system in time and things like that. So that's why I'm taking roofs out and they are going to go under a separate permit fee, uh, to try and, and deal with this situation. And some of them, I'm literally having to go off two and three different days because they break up a large roof, it's just different components. And technically, kind of, it comes just doesn't cut it. And I've tried charging an inspection fees when I've gone out and they don't pay them. So it's the only way I'm going to be able to handle this from the get-go is to put a larger unit. And I've been right, I'm not right. So, um, that's probably the biggest change. The other thing is, um, back on page four oh six, well, we haven't, at this point, we're going to be doing some changes on sign. Well, like if they're just doing a sign, it's, we think they're for a sign based change only. Um, but the other big one that's going to be going in here that I've never addressed before are cellular towers, and that's due to the issue that came up this year with some stuff. So, um, there'll be individual partners and like that. Um, I'm still debating with my company. I can debate why I was four months ago I'm not charged. So that's why it's not even, that will be added, um, before, um, before the, uh, sign one under commercial. So it'll go new, um, construction that made it, basically right under specialized missile experiments, which are actually starting on bomb at eighty-three. You'll be seeing on the insert on that. And I'll be sharing those with you, so that you'll at least know, like, I'm going to the next meeting. So and if you folks have any input or concern, please, do let me know, okay? And when, the only other thing that and, um, we're just, what we kind of correlate to different things that we may be looking at is we're probably going to need to update impact fees. I don't know where we're at normally with new residential construction. There may fees with school district and also something that I don't know. So people need to stand versus sometimes I might apply something that you folks need to be aware of. I think those have to be voted on. They have to be letters of agreement and everything else in there. And I just
It's been a good fifteen years since we were reviewing impact.
Yes, I would say at least.
Two thousand and two.
Yeah, we've, we've been here since eight. And I've never had to enforce an impact fee from the office. So with what we've got coming, we need thirty-two year homes. We need to
Be sure.
It gives us, it's still, I'm rolling down them still.
We don't want school district coming back and telling us for short change.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and I think there's probably something with fire.
Well, there's fire district, park district, library district, everybody's
plethora of impact fees. Yeah, so
I'm not sure this board even is aware of what we're talking about when we say the impact fees. Impact fees are the fees that are charged to a developer upon new construction. Because if you recall, you're paying your taxes a year behind. You'll pay, you know, twenty-two, you paid the twenty-one taxes. New construction comes on, it could be eighteen months before it hits tax notice. And so the impact fees are designed to cover us in that interim, when they're, they're not paying any property tax. You're right. If everything else has gone up two percent a year over the last fifteen, eighteen years, we're probably thirty percent off on our, uh, impact fees. New construction, we have regards, what like? We've got, uh, a proposal for a thirty-two unit, uh, complex over here by Kinder Care.
The house being built on my street, it's brand new construction.
That actually falls under the old, so you're aware.
Yeah, that, that subdivision's already been built out. And so that's, it's, it's, it's really new, new construction. It's not just anybody building a new house. It has to be a new subdivision. It's coming. But I, we've still, every once in a while somebody, a bright problem. If you recall years ago, we've got an alleyway, uh, utilities down along Sleepy Hollow Road so that we can reach the bright problem, if they would like to annex into Sleepy Hollow. It'd be a lot like O'Hare East to Chicago. Chicago is a little disconnected from O'Hare, but it's still city Chicago. They did that by an alleyway annexation. If you look at the maps, there's about a thirty or sixty foot wide stretch from Chicago out to O'Hare. And that's it.
And ironically, that's how Aurora Airport is a Aurora airport and should go because they ride along Lena all the way to Aurora. That's why our airport, I should go there.
That's what we've done with the bright property at the corner of Sleepy Hollow and Boncaster. Right along Sleepy Hollow Road, it was that easy. So should they like to come in, we've got what, sixty acres down there?
A little over.
So there's possible, you know, we do know one, the guy on Willow's talking with us right now. We've got a deposit from him. He's working through the topographies with them. That'll bring roughly about another ninety people to the village.
Two thousand and five is the transition piece we were, nicely managed.
Two thousand and five. Okay, so you'll be back with the building and the zoning fees?
Yeah, it'll be FYI, anything?
Okay. Any other new business come before you?
I move, we adjourn.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Hearn to adjourn. Hold call, please. Oh, discussion on this one? Mr., I was waiting for an argument. Mr. Prano. Aye. Mr. Gatlin. Aye. Mr. Hearn. Aye. Mr. Thornd. Aye. Mr. Hoffman. Aye. We are adjourned. Happy holidays, all. See you.
Happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas and happy holiday.